Call regular meeting, app support commissioners order. If you please stand for the implication of the place of life.
Let's pray. Our Father, we are thankful and grateful to be a part of a great community, Ashland, Kentucky. We are thankful for the many successes that we are experiencing as a city. We once again ask you for your presence today as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. We ask for your guidance and direction on this board of mayor and city commissioners. Be with our city manager, our department heads, our employees, and our citizens and those in attendance today. Go with us throughout today and then the days to come. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion received by the agenda. On favor.
Aye.
On the side. Motion received by the minutes of our recess meeting of May 22, 2018, our regular meeting of May 24, 2018, our regular meeting June 14, 2018, our call meeting of June 25, 2018, our regular meeting June 28, 2018, our recess meeting June 29, and our recess meeting July 19, 2018. On favor?
Aye.
On the side. Hearing your reports, commissioners, everything.
Just have a few comments. Spent a pretty exciting couple of weeks around here, I think. We did the Toyota groundbreaking on Monday. I think it was, whatever day it is, I'm kind of apologetic. Crazy. Wednesday was a groundbreaking for wings that come through St. Louis. I went to, I wasn't in the city of Ashland, but obviously will benefit our citizens and our people as well, so we were excited about that. I think it's a great time to be here right now, and I say that all the time, but I feel that so genuinely that I feel like I have to say it every time that I get a group of people together. Got a lot of things coming up. First Friday, next Friday, of course, Whitney, I think I s- maybe not. Oh, there she is. I don't see Whitney come in and probably talk about first Friday next month for Ashland and motion that gets bigger and better each month, I think, so just want to make sure everybody's aware of that and ready to go.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I just want to ask that you all pray for the family of Kim Jenkins-McClemmons, who's over the small business development. She is greatly ill, and her family asked me to ask you all to send prayers in her way, their way. With visit within the hospice today, and she's close to coming home.
Thanks, Commissioner, appreciate that. Okay, I get to have the honor of swearing in some people who are in place to our fire department, and I'd like to begin with Parker Coleman, who is going to be a firefighter for us in Ashland, and like Alyssa, where are you? Yep, you got them up. John Coleman, Grant Stevenson, and Martha Stevenson, are they here? I'm missing somebody. There's somebody. What's your name, John Coleman?
Grant Stewart. It's a big deal for us, so public safety, you know, we try to do a lot of things in Ashland and do it right. And I mentioned Toyota. I mean, I've got a whole bit, I don't want to keep you very long, but all I want to say about Toyota moving in and what a big plus it's going to be, what's going to happen in the east end of Ashland and the number of employees. It's kind of a domino effect, a lot of great things to happen, Mr. Goodman mentioned his prayer. We're on a high in Ashland, and attitudes change, and that's how you develop, economic development, is attitude only first. And I want to mention, one of the things I said the other day in the groundbreaking is when Clay Green, who is kind of the owner-operator now, Mike Ayers is the general manager of the new circle road Toyota, he's actually going to move to town, he has four or five kids, he's so excited to move to Ashland and run this operation. But when I first met Clay Green, when we came into the office and we started talking, he said, "The word in Lexington was that Ashland was the place to do business now, and it's a place to be, and that's where they wanted to put a dealership in." You know, going to put about a $7 million facility in, and it's going to be right on the road with all of our other dealerships, which is how people car shop. And I think everybody's going to feed off of each other, and I think, have it, a major Toyota dealership, it's the oldest one in Kentucky, and Mr. Green, elder statesman of the group, told me, the groundbreaking, it's the oldest Toyota dealership in America. Now, it may not be, but said that to me, and I'm glad to think of it that way. But every little thing, small business or large business, is a great move to our economy in Ashland. They're going to have about 70 jobs, they're going to be well-paid in those 70 jobs. Big thing, we offer people more than anything, and the other thing he said to me, which you don't usually get this when a business coming into Ashland, you want to be in the city limits. And I want them in the city limits. We want them all in the city limits, we can. But with this one, they had had four acres, and the only four flat acres we had was old Bluegrass Grill property. And I kept saying the other day upfront that I talked to the owner of the property, I said, "We've got to have this on this property, on your property, it has to go there." And the two reporters after it was all over said, "Mayor, how come you kept saying it had to be on this property?" I said, "Well, it's only four acres of flat land that we have in Ashland number one, and it wasn't in the city limits." So, and it's a blighted area, you know, that particular piece of property. So, it isn't the actual city limits of Ashland, it's a couple miles up the road, but because we have that beautiful sign there and the green area, when you come through that, most people think that is where the city limits begin. So, it's going to be from that point further coming into our downtown, it's going to be part of the beautification of that whole area. So, we're really excited to get those jobs, that's what it's about. If you don't have public safety, nobody wants to be in your community. And our police and fire are second to none anywhere, and we're all very proud of for that. Ensure our safety to our homes, our possessions, and to our, who we are. But I can't say nothing about it. When you get new firefighter, he becomes part of one of the best fire departments anywhere, large city, small city. We're very proud of that, and it's very much like our police department. They're not armed, but they're a very precarious profession, and when they leave to go to work and do their shift, there could be great perils for them on behalf of all of us in Ashland. So, we appreciate the family being supportive of our retirement, and we're going to be as proud of you as everybody else. Please raise your right hand. Your partner, Coleman. You can't wait, sure, see, because when I do this, it's done. And if it's somebody else, he's got a job, it's fine.
Firefighter Parker Coleman, you solemnly swear to do your duty as a firefighter for the City of Ashland Fire Department to the best of your ability to serve the citizens of Ashland compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Ashland. So help God. Just sit down. Thank you all. And if I can have Captain Anthony Cornwell. And Whitney Cornwell. Maddox Martin. Nash Cornwell. Quinn Martin. And, I love this one, Maverick Cornwell. Now, are you sure you won't be late for the wire? I know why he decided to be a fireman. Engineer Brad Kitson. Andy Sprain, please come with me. Heather Rose, welcome, glad you're here. And Engineer Derek Ten Gauske. Becky Sager. That's your mom. She doesn't look old enough, but you are. Brent Sager. Wyatt Ten Gauske, he's here. And Skip and Janet Keely. Firefighters, please raise your right hand. Captain Anthony Cornwell, Engineer Brad Kitson, Engineer Derek Ten Gauske, solemnly swear to continue to serve the citizens of the City of Ashland, continue your new capacity, and compassionate man with courage and intention to put others before you and accept the sacrifice in need to serve our community. And you swear to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the City of Ashland. So help God. So, congratulations. Hey, I have two daughters and four granddaughters, I'd leave out the whole baby. I present you new firefighter positions here, promotions, that help keep us safe. Please welcome. Chief, thank you. Thank you. Firefighters, thank you for supporting your fellow firefighters. We appreciate that. It's always great to recognize promotions and new people on our force and our firefighters staff. Okay, city manager, report.
Just a couple of things, Mayor. First off, starting with the mission, vision values, in case the community's not tracking, we got a couple pre-work sessions to develop, update the city's mission, vision values. Session with the department heads in June, and just last week, Mayor and Commissioners met to fine-tune and get their draft on the mission, vision, value statement. It's with KLC, it's back with us for review now, so that's ongoing. I want to thank the Mayor and Commissioners, and also the department heads that worked with their folks to get what I think is going to be a great product back together. Next thing is on 29th Street. We're still working some punch list items on 29th Street, but I think what you see is the vast majority is completion of the product, the project, excuse me, and again, a couple more punch list items, and we'll let you know when we go for final payment of everything that's been completed. How can we help? I don't have the statistics today, but the How Can We Help button is continuing to see great site increase, and we appreciate that. Trying to get feedback, I know we're having some issues with iOS systems. We think that's been resolved, so again, if you have that issue that you can't get on either with your local or your cell phone or from home, please let us know, we'll get with, we'll try to resolve that as soon as possible. But great feedback so far on How Can We Help. And then the last thing, recycling. The recycling survey closes at the end of the month. We're right at now at about 1,000 surveys that have been returned. I'm looking at those statistics. We're also going to extend the analysis that we're doing just at the local recycling point for another month as we track the statistics, who's using that, where they're from, and some of the other things that are important as we give tangible data to the Mayor and Commissioners to make decisions on how we go forward with that in the future. Also, starting to look at the cost of what recycling, curbside recycling will cost us per the American commissions directive, so that's all I have.
Thank you very much. At this point, our meeting is public participation. If you'd like to have somebody bring the board forward, we'd ask you to come to the podium, give us your name, address, and limit your comments five minutes or less. Yes, sir.
My name is John Johnson. I live at 2934 Hampton Street in South Ashland. Most of you guys got an email from me first of the week, and we've decided to postpone the meeting for right now as the way it is. I have had a conference call with the city manager and what have you, and I've talked to Mr. Martin here, and hopefully we get everything worked out. So, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We have deep concern for every neighborhood in Ashland, and when people's home and property are in jeopardy of some sort, you know, it's important to us. We are neighbors, and neighborhoods do out, so I'm glad they're making progress on this paper issue. Thanks for being here today, too. Yes?
My name's Jonathan Nixon. I live at 6281 Rucker Road, which actually is in Summit. The city came out and changed, put new water lines, new taps, new meters, and left our road a mess, exactly two. It's Rucker Road from Summit Road and Route 76, and Godey Court from 716. I did do the How Can We Help? I did get an email from Joanna, and she did send the street supervisor out, who kind of got out, stopped on it, said it was soft, it would be all right, and drove off. I do have pictures. They don't do justice, it kind of looks like a total war country out there. Like, there's gravel piled everywhere, there's even a pile of gravel that belongs to you guys that's not been just moved. I didn't know what other steps I needed to take to try to get it at least graded till we're not sinking. There's a big metal grate in the middle of the road that's covered up a big hole. This side's sinking, so it's sticking up, so if you hit it too hard, it punctures your tires, so.
We'll get it back out. We'll make sure we resolve it.
Okay.
Ms. Nixon, are you saying that we messed the road up?
Yes. When the city came out, they dug up the whole road, they put in new water lines and covered it up. They come back out, dug the same places back up, put in new taps, covered it up. They did like three different things. They busted our sewer line, which they did come back out and fix, but they just left gravel in big chunks, and some of it don't have gravel, and it's pretty hard to drive along.
I'm sure the city after all handled, we sorry for your inconvenience.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else?
My name is Leva Picker. I live at 2615 Moore Street, and I just made some advice from the council today because we've done everything else we know to do, and so that's why I'm here. About a year or so ago, a gentleman came by in his 40s and tried to make friends with my son, I have a special needs son, and have paperwork to back it up. We've got paperwork from the cancer center, he's had 50 operations, multiple things, and he's also mentally challenged and physically challenged. And I need to say that upfront because he was here earlier, he looks like he's, he's not quite five feet tall, so he's very small for his age, and that plays into this. And I'll try to make this brief. He came by and tried to make friends with him and taught my son to buy cigarettes and booze and stuff for him, and then when he stopped doing that, he disappeared, and all of a sudden, he came back. And April of this year, we have called the police over and over and over, and they've come, they've been faithful, I have nothing critical to say about them. But this is so scary for people that don't have a mother or anybody to navigate this. The guy came in, he let him in, and he stole, I mean, what medicine he stole was Boost Par, and he just took it all. He was in the restroom for a long time, came out, and my son calls me, and it's like 12:30, and said, you know, he took, he took my medicine, and I'm doing my best not to call any names, that's why I'm being very careful about this, because it's not about that. It's about, we've got to have some help of some kind. So, we called the police, well, then the burden of proof is on us to go back to the cancer center days later to prove that Jimmy even had the medicine, and that his wife had the medicine. They're both anxiety ridden and mentally challenged. So, we get all that, we go back to the police station, then they fill out another report, then we have to come back down and get the report. Then we're sent up to try to get some kind of restraining order or something, then they give us the wrong paperwork, and then tell us that because they're not married to each other, which, I didn't even get that, but anyway, then they tell us to go to Phil Pedrick. So much Phil Pedrick. Didn't get any help there, so they tell us, okay, this is in April, so this is being crazy for us. Then in July, this guy gets out of jail, and now he's back again, driving up to the property, before he was in front of the property, and there's no way we can get pictures or prove anything, and they say it's our word against his. But he pulls into the driveway and hollers that they're retards and whores, and gives them a finger, 7:30, 8 o'clock morning, then they call us, and I have to come over because they're scared to death and don't know what to do. So, we've called protection advocacy in Frankfurt, we went back up to the court today, we contacted legal aid, they have helped us to try to get an IPO, but they can't find him to serve him anything, so no papers, set up another court date for August the 9th. Then the deputy's up there, of course, we didn't have a chance to tell him why Jimmy's done this and this, but he has a physical disability. So, the deputy comes over and tells him, "Put your hands away from your face and sit up." Well, he's not able to do that, and we can't say anything when we're in there. So, what do we do? What can we do? If you all have any ideas, I'm open.
Counselor?
I'd be glad to be with and discuss with you and see if there's some way that we can come up with.
I appreciate it.
Either after the meeting or a time convenient.
Okay. Thank you. Really, I mean, everybody's tried, you know, but everybody says the same thing. Our hands are tied, our hands are tied. We can't do, what's going to happen to Jimmy if I did?
Yeah, sure. Man, you got, you know, you got a very stressful situation going, and you're the last person we want being given a runaround and people not taking this seriously. Many times that happens when they can't relate to the disabilities involved, which is very unfortunate. We seem to have more and more training with our public safety people to recognize these things. Now, does the APD, do they know who this person is?
They know him well, because one of us, as a matter of fact, knew exactly who I was talking about, felt he could have the full name, because he's been in and out of the jail all the time. And the only reason that we were spared from April to July is because we found out later he was in jail. He was locked up, and that's why we didn't have to deal with it. But, you know, here's the thing, I don't know how this works, if every time the police come out, do they fill out a report every time they come? Because we don't, we don't have.
I would expect that they do.
Do they?
We'll have to research. I'm talking with Matt right now with our 911 coordinator, give me the time to been up there so I can kind of comprise the information.
Sure. And I appreciate it. And I mean, they're wonderful to come, and when we're told, call every time, well, we do, and they're faithful, and they come, but their hands are tied too. And then they, you know, this, I can't find, which they can't find him, I understand that, but what does that do for Jimmy? Nothing. And today made it worse. I mean, he came in here just to see how things work, because he's convinced now that nothing else works. We've been trying for over a year for nothing. So, I appreciate your help.
A bigger issue on this too may be advocacy for folks that have aged out for extra care early on. And it's like you said, being the caregiver, where is there help for folks when their parents do pass? I think that's also a bigger question, and probably something we need to address at the state level as well.
I mean, there's one, the protection advocacy group in Frankfurt have been wonderful, and as a matter of fact, they came up here at one time and dealt with one restaurant because they didn't want to give Jimmy a burn.
You have state representatives and state senate folks in our community that I would reach out to specifically to address that, because I do think that concern is real, and I'm certain that you're not alone.
And I thank you for that. I mean, if I have a hard time navigating, and I feel like I'm, you know, I have some colleagues, and have lived a long time, I'm an old person, and if I can't navigate it, then how in the world do they expect these people that can't even read and comprehend it? So, on top of the physical, I mean, you know, Jimmy's been abused and bullied throughout school, then he's in his 40s, and now he's been abused again. Then that's just not right. That's wrong.
Leva, where does he reside?
Do Jimmy? On Dixon.
On Dixon, okay. I came home the other night, 11 o'clock at night, from Prubers the other night, and we talked the other night about this. So, we're trying to get you some help.
And I appreciate it, you know, I mean, and you guys did really good to Jimmy, and I wanted, I wanted the people to be able to see him, because when we write this down, you know, to do the IPO, and then they're like, okay, well, you know, it's like these two guys are having issues, one of them's in their 40s, the other one's in their 40s, but they don't get it. They don't get it, they don't understand. And of course, when you go to court, you couldn't say nothing. All we did was get another date set up for August the 9th, which does what? They can't find him, it's served in the papers, so, okay, now he's sentenced to court, but it can't be sentenced if you can't find him. So, it's a nightmare. And if this is bad for me, I don't even want to think about what it's like for everybody else. Oh, God, for people who have nobody that's making the stand, who any kind of understands any of this, or isn't bold enough to say anything. And Jimmy hadn't seen him for a long time, and this guy's excuse was, you know, well, we're friends, we're buds, blah, 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 and he won't come to my house. I wish he would, but he won't. You know, we're trying to be law abiding and do the right thing, and Jimmy has the right to be able to do that, for him and his wife to live in peace without people coming by and giving him a finger and telling him he's a retard, and then you have to call the police again. You know, and I'm sure it's terrible, for the police, why should they have to come and do what? They can't find him, it's not their fault, but he's not there, he's not going to do this and stick around, he's going to disappear like he's always done. But anyway, thank you, I don't want to burn up a bunch of time, I appreciate it, thank you, and I'm stoked for the meeting to make with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, and I'm sure you will, our people will stay on top of it. How frustrating is it to be? But that's life, that's real. How frustrating is it to be? It's gonna be, but that's life, that's real life that people don't run into very often.
It is, and I hate it for, I hate it for people.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's a horrible thing.
Well, how you in there?
And you're standing up not just for Jimmy, but all the Jimmies?
I am.
Out there.
And for his wife that has nobody but me. Of course, you know, Jimmy can't defend her. I mean, of course, I'm another man, but how horrible it must be to be, you know, a little over four feet tall and have somebody tell your wife all these horrible things about her and come down and wake you up all hours just because they want to. And now he's walking back and forth in front of the house. Oh, he doesn't come on the property. He just does that, back and forth, back and forth, walk right and back just because he can.
Well, that's a serious problem in our town and people think they have problems. Here's somebody like you, that's a problem, that's a issue.
Thank you for listening.
We'll try to give all assistance we can.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank y'all for being here, we appreciate it. All business out of A.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the city title six program of civil rights assurance per federal transit administration requirements for the Ashland Bus System and specifically repealing ordinance eighty-nine, series two thousand nine, ordinance eighty-nine, series two thousand fourteen, first reading on June twenty-eighth.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign out of B.
First reading on June twenty-eighth, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an engineering service contract between the city and M S E of Kentucky Inc. in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars for their proposal to provide engineering services for the city water booster pump station, Reese Park Regional Business Park, through the city engineering capital development director.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign out of C.
First reading on June twenty-eighth, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky revving parking on the east side of Ballard Street between Cactus and Logan Streets, both sides of Putnam Street from Logan Street, two hundred feet northbound and providing a penalty for the violation of the ordinance.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign out of D.
First reading, June twenty-eighth, ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing the city manager to enter into short-term rentals of parking spaces on the city-owned municipal parking lot located on Greenup Avenue between Fifteenth and Sixteenth Street.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. Any other old business? Consent agenda?
Resolution, City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting and authorizing approving the course of action presented by the city manager on items appearing on the consent agenda, regular meeting, Board of City Commissioners, July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
I've got one comment to make on the consent agenda. Item number twenty-seven, depending on where we're at with the bids for the Sixteenth Street Plaza, the location, which I think that's maybe adjusted, the organization, we need to get you as aware of that.
Anybody have any questions or concerns on the consent agenda?
I have a question, if you want to get there, just as a matter of clarification. Number six, this says, payment for customer support agreement renewal. Can you tell me what that is because I don't know that company?
This is a, actually, probably commissioner because of the name of the company, I understand has switched hands in the last couple of years. We've been doing business, this is an annual payment for finance-related software, license and fees, online web support.
I just didn't pick that up in the notes and so I just was curious.
And so we've been, we've been with this, some version of this company for many years.
Any other questions? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign.
We didn't have a second.
There's no, we need motion.
I made the motion, but we didn't have a second.
Say yeah, I thought you wanted to hit second.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. Mr. Parks, glad to have you back in town. Thank you.
You look great.
You look great.
Feel great.
Good.
Out of A. New business?
Yeah, out of A.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract with Cosby Construction for concrete improvement program for the city, Department Public Services Utilities Operations Division of Street� in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and ten cents.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign out of C.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Morris Contracting for South Twenty-Nine Street Waterline Replacement Project in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents for the Department Public Services and Utility Operations.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign out of C.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and Triple B Construction for repair and or replacement of chain link fencing around one pump station and two water storage tanks in the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for the Department Public Services Utility Operations Division of Water Distribution.
Have a motion?
So.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. Out of D.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky amending the authorized positions of the Policy Procedures Compensation Plan, Classification Plan, is adopted by ordinance fifty-one, series two thousand seventeen by combining the total number of crew leaders, wastewater collection operators one, two, three, and four, equipment operators two, three, and pump station technicians. So as not to exceed eleven total for the Department Public Services and Utility Operations Division of Wastewater Collection.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. Out of D.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and W B Hospitality LLC regarding encroachment installation of an awning at fourteen oh one Winchester Avenue in an aerial manner across the alleyway between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Streets running parallel to Winchester Avenue on the city's right of way.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. And that's at the hotel, that's where the hotel. Out of A.
Ordinance City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving change order two between the city and Mike Inyard and Sons Inc. contract adopted by ordinance eight, series eighteen regarding the Louisiana Street Water Main Project in Kalisburg, increasing the contract in the amount of two thousand sixty-six dollars and forty-nine cents for the Department Public Services and Utilities Operations Division of Water Distribution. So.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. Out of G.
Resolution, excuse me, resolution City of Ashland, Kentucky designating Jack Hunter interim director, Public Services and Utility Operations, as the city's designated to represent the city with regard to Federal Emergency Management Agency branches. So.
Any discussion? All favor? Those who like sign. Have an appointment?
Yes, sir.
Out of H.
Mayor asks for your approval of his recommendation of appointment to the code enforcement board, three-year term from March one eighteen to expire March one twenty-one, David Strong, twenty-six fifteen, Harrisburg.
Mr. Strong is currently a member of that board and this is reappointing him, he's excellent, member, attends and very active in the community. And I appreciate the fact he's willing to continue to serve. All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. Any other new business?
Mayor, I can hear something.
Sure.
I have been approached by many citizens the Fourth of July season about the need for fireworks ordinance. Fireworks have been a nuisance in most neighborhoods and have a terrific effect on people with anxiety, heart problems, PTSD, heart pats, and those just wanting a good night's rest. These fireworks have gone on for many weeks, not just on the Fourth of July. I would like to make a motion to adopt a fireworks ordinance to prohibit fireworks in residential areas.
I second that. I appreciate you bringing it up, Commissioner, I think all of us probably were contacted this time around. I know my neighborhood, when I say my neighborhood, not necessarily across the street or next door, but within the confines of that area, I think this started a couple of weeks before. And fireworks, I don't know, probably my age, but they're louder now to me. Of course, I can hear them, I can still hear, but I swear.
Has the law has been changed in terms of what's now a legal firework? Because I know when we were younger, you even in the city or even anywhere else, you couldn't buy the things that went up into the air and all that.
Yeah, there's been some changes on what can be sold now. The ordinance, we modified, I don't know the exact year, maybe three or four years ago. A lot of it has to do with sales, so.
We've been collecting ordinances from around the state and we'll try to get a draft out to you in the next week or so. And as soon as we heard your interest, we started working.
Thank you.
I think we've probably all got calls, I certainly did, but I could hardly hear the person talking for the noise. They're doing it earlier than ever.
They really are. But one thing that we need to look at in terms of if we're going to enact an ordinance of this magnitude is the enforcement of it and what it's gonna take to make sure that that's enforced properly, just to have that in the back of our head while we're looking at that.
Yeah, I know it's difficult, all your standpoint on those issues is kind of.
For their.
Yeah, please, please particularly.
I'm not sure we have enough bodies.
It appeared to me this year in my area of town, they continue to set them off for another week or so, you know, that's enough. And we are, for the most part, an elderly community who have provided for the needs in our city for many, many years. It's the least thing we can do is try to protect them a little bit, you know. I'm pretty young for my age, as the nun used to say, it's immaturity, and it is. And I'm gonna hang on to immaturity as long as I can, because I try to think young, but it really bugged me a lot. And I guess more so being the mayor and knowing that people are gonna expect me to do something about it. But Commissioner, I really appreciate you bringing it up, we've gotta do something. And you know, along that same line, I know it's difficult for our police department, but motorcycles in town and especially anywhere, but especially around the Central Park where people go to kinda quiet time and walk the dog or just sit on the park bench. It seems like everybody wants to go through the park on a loud motorcycle. And I know we have a noise level ordinance, I don't know, I mean, it's one of those imperfect systems that's, you know, where there's no way, unless you had some kind of meter you could go around with. But I just think some warning citations or something are, would be helpful maybe. And I know that you can't be everywhere and people do call and complain and all, but all of that is a tendency to disrupt neighborhoods in the downtown area, so.
I'll be here as well, I love that.
Yeah, me too. We're gonna be for whatever, I can tell you that.
I mean, it's not just about noise, but you're right, Mayor, it's about safety. One of my customers does business with me weekly. Her elderly parents were asleep and fireworks were set off late at nine and a burning ember landed on their roof and killed them.
Seriously?
Yeah. A couple of years ago, she actually has been before the Ohio Senate and testified because it was in South Point on strengthening the ordinance because it is a safety issue. Yes, it is distracting all of us, but the fact that you could lose your life from a burning ember, you know, the people that probably set the firework off had no clue because they were long gone before the house cut lights.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Okay, good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Bill, I'd like to have an opportunity to introduce some new business as well.
We have a motion, a second.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Those who like sign. Okay. Any other new business?
Yes, I'd like to introduce either a resolution or a motion to add four boards to be recorded, similar to the way our board is being recorded now. The code enforcement board, the zoning adjustment board, the planning commission, maybe the park board, and then have that available, similar to how we currently record our meetings that are available to the public on the city website.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I only have a question, and this may be a question for you. What are our requirements for keeping the, do we need a specific server to store those and what is the cost of that server? I just wanna examine the cost.
Yeah, how much does it cost us because currently recording our own recordings? Do we know? I don't know that answer.
I think my town TV does them.
But we also, I mean, it's also recorded, we record on the trip.
What are those requirements to keep those recordings in terms of combined with open records?
Did you have to join in or say Andrew?
I'm sorry.
Do you have any answers to this?
I don't have the answer right now.
Go ahead.
I would get your exact numbers, but it would be best if we had a server dedicated to holding those recordings. We upload them to YouTube, but that's not guaranteed.
Just like the, like they're doing here.
We currently obviously maintain minutes in each of these boards and each of our existing boards, minutes are taken and maintained and those we are required to do and we do. And they're available to anybody for review or request. And those are maintained by, in terms of park board, by the recreation department and code enforcement, planning, and B C A are maintained by the city environment.
I think if it's gonna be cost prohibitive, and I don't know, we don't know what the cost is, maybe the first step in that is to making sure that, one, those meetings are announced with the agenda on our website and then those minutes are available on our website because I don't think they're available on the site.
And I can't answer whether.
We don't post any.
Those minutes are actually being filed on the website.
They're not.
I think they should be.
They should be, for sure. I think, I think Commissioner raises a very legitimate point that action that's taken place at these boards should be available for review by the system. So those ought to be filed and be available.
Well, I think our website could put the agenda and then follow up with the minutes.
But when they're, they become official minutes when they're approved, you know, you approve the minutes that, those then become available. They're not, they're not minutes until they're approved.
Yeah.
So have a second on the motion that we wanna go ahead and vote on or?
Well, I just got a couple more things I'd wanna say is, we got about, I don't wanna make four words, but.
You just mentioned four.
Yeah, you mentioned four.
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 Yeah, just the ones usually there in this, in this chamber.
Or use three of them.
The park, yeah, the park board is the only one that isn't.
Yeah, and.
You're correct.
We wouldn't be able to use equipment and existing resources that we already have set available for this board when it's televised.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with recording them, but I'm not, I'm not prepared to vote to put this into action until we actually know what it's gonna cost us to keep those records.
Let me ask a question, I think I know the answer to it. This is being done right now here and I don't think we have a policy that we've adopted as to this commission is recorded. We may have had a motion to do it, but I don't think we've ever adopted.
It's good point.
Right.
Good point.
A resolution.
So we actually as a body, it's not required that we record.
Well, absolutely it's not. I think, I think if there were anything that were done, I wouldn't do anything more than a motion. But, you know, instituted a policy in terms of trying it out for a while to see how it would go.
You know, we had a, we had a great, we had a great session the city manager put forth for us where we discussed our mission, vision, and values. And one of the things that was discussed unanimously by this whole board was something that I hear often from our own citizens and it's transparency and accessibility. And I think of no easier way to make all of our boards available to the public is than by. by recording these meetings and making them available, accessible, regardless of cost. I can't imagine it being that much because we don't worry about that now for our own board meetings. So, but I take, I take into consideration exactly what you said, both of you. I think it's important that we make sure that this, this board, I think, has something in place to let the public know that it will be recorded, available to the public for the future.
I don't disagree with that at all. I think that, that all of our, all of the city meetings should be accessible to the public, should be available for anything they want to, want to know what happens in this. And I think-
Yeah, I, I, when you finish.
I think posting the agenda and making those minutes available, because they're not now and I think, I agree with you 100% they need to be.
Right.
But back to, you know, we don't have a policy in place for this, this record that we're keeping and I-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should have a policy better than the policy that we set for ourselves.
I agree. Agreed. And I know that when we looked at even, you know, the body cams and everything for the police department, that was a massive cost in storing that video.
Sure.
It was huge. And it's what keeps us from, from using that service and keeping those. It's not that we don't want to do it and it's not that we don't think that it's beneficial to the police department, to public, whatever. The cost of keeping that as a matter of record is exorbitant. And, and I know that because we looked at that, we looked, was it two years ago, three years ago, something like that.
I think that's something we could research then.
I think we, the motion could be in order to table this, we get-
I'll, I'll be willing to table that motion, absolutely.
I don't think anybody disagrees with any other-
Can we?
Yeah, the other thought I wanted to mention and, and before we move past it is that these are volunteer boards and we need to at least make them aware of that, that we're considering this kind of action and maybe get some-
I think what's great about the volunteer boards is it will expose the public to what a great service that our volunteer-
Absolutely.
You bet.
Absolutely.
Members of these different agencies or boards are doing. I mean, I know for a fact, one of my dear friends is here today and she works hard for this city and people don't have a clue just how hard they work to keep, to keep our town clean and to keep people accountable.
I know who you're talking about, she's been off for a long time.
Yeah, I appreciate you a lot.
If we're going to table this motion, can we make the motion to make those agendas and minutes available from-
Yeah, why don't you finish with this motion and make that one.
My motion probably should fail.
You're going to table it, it'd be, we need to say table it.
I'm, I'm not sure, I think-
I'm not saying table it.
Well, I think, I'd be okay with letting this motion fail because now that you made it clear that we don't have something in place for our own board, that I would want my new motion to include our own board for permanent videoing and documenting and availability of the website.
So what procedure, where, where are we going here?
There's a vote and I just want to-
Hold on, yes, I guess. Or if he withdraws it.
I can withdraw it.
And then the second is-
Don't, that's when we say what he said. When we don't say what he said, you say what he said.
I'll withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw. Need to withdraw the second.
Yeah.
We, I think we should put in place immediately the agenda, these meetings, and their minutes will be on our website ASAP after that meeting.
I agree. I'll make that motion.
I think you had two, the second one.
Well, you, you heard what I said about there not being minutes until they're adopted.
Right, right.
Sure, sure. Well, but we don't, we don't have anything to do with the doctor's boards minutes.
No, no. I'm talking about our-
Oh, yeah. Excluding us right now. Oh, we, we are, we do.
Ours are on the website.
Ours are on there.
Mm-hmm.
But the point is, I think the sunnies earlier, or excuse me, councils earlier, point that if the BCA meets first, I think it's first Tuesday of each month, at that, their minutes aren't official until they meet next time. So if this board approves, then they'd be a month delay.
True. But no, I think that, I think that is our, this board, and I don't mean to speak for all of us, is that if there is a BCA meeting next Tuesday, then this week the notice goes up that there's a meeting with their agenda and then when those minutes are approved, they're available. It needs to be exactly the way that ours is.
And I think the fact that-
Agendas and, and meetings.
See what's going to be on there.
You could end up having them on air without maintaining the recording. I mean, they could be on air.
Right.
And the minutes be maintained if not the recording.
Right.
I mean, there are a lot of options.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Those who like to sign. Okay. All right. We, that'll be a closed session-
We do not.
-today. So if there's nothing else, most of the darned. Any questions? Thank y'all for being here. Good luck.